Well, call a meeting to order. First item is invocation by Reverend Pamela Schmolling of the Anglican Church of the Holy Spirit.
Holy Father, we are such a blessed people. We're blessed by this community in which we live. We are blessed by our mayor, our city council members, our executive officers and officials, and our first responders. We're blessed by all the men and women who give of their time and of their talent to make our town a thriving, safe place in which to live. And so tonight, Lord, we ask you to continue to bless and guide our mayor and city council members in their every decision and discussion. And we pray this in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Schmolling. Carla Goodwill leads us in the pledge.
So, right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carla. Next item is roll call. Diane.
Mayor Skug.
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Nye.
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Diane. Okay, we move on then to scheduled announcements and presentations. Now, we also, we had student of the month on the agenda, I understand. It's not going to be tonight, right? Okay, we move on then to Chamber of Commerce. Zack. Good to see you, Jack.
I just finished my, uh...
You've got to use the microphone, Zack.
I just finished my semester. Can I be student of the month since? Is over here? I'll take that.
Only if you want to go back to high school.
Oh, jeez. Never again. That was the worst seven years of my life.
Forget it. Just do this one.
Anyway, thanks again for letting us be here. I need to bring this up a little bit. I'll get adjusted to you in a sec. Thanks for letting us be here. As a benefit to our members, we like bringing some businesses up here and introducing themselves. So, I'd like to introduce Sam and Mary. How do you say it again?
Paulette.
Paulette. Good.
Hi, thanks for having us. I'm Sam. This is my wife, Mary. And we just opened Beads to You on 69, right by Navajo. And come and see us. We make beads and jewelry and give classes and it's a lot of fun. We are really happy to be in Prescott Valley. It's the response from the chamber, from everybody, from the public. The response is overwhelming, warm, sincere, welcoming. So, thank you.
Mary, it's your turn. Twenty minutes.
Oh, twenty minutes? I can talk.
You're going to have to pull the thing down a little bit.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to say that we are very happy. You know, we've always had the dream of opening a store. We've been online for 20 years and now Prescott Valley was, it was just the right time. I wanted to mention that we also sell our jewelry that we design. We make one of a kind and we gift wrap for $1. So, if anybody wants to come by and take a class, we do individual classes, group classes, and Saturday we have a class from 10 to 12, and on Sundays, 1 to 3. And thank you for the nice, warm response we're getting from everyone. We really appreciate it. And we're so, so happy to be in Prescott Valley.
Give us your address again.
It's 8516 East Highway 69. We're right next to Central Sewing, the sewing shop. We're right past Navajo, if you're coming from the library. Down 69, you make a left on Navajo and a quick right in front of the Texaco. And we're on the left-hand side.
Tell them you make some beautiful jewelry.
My husband's five of, there's only five of us in the United States who make furnace arc glass. They're blown glass beads. After he blows the glass, it takes him like months and months and months of cutting, and then it takes him two and a half weeks of each batch to polish. So, they're very difficult to make, but the result, the end result is just amazing. They're beautiful. So, thank you.
But the process is nowhere near glamorous.
Yes, it's not. So, thank you.
Well, thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you. And come see us. Please stop in and see the beautiful store.
Really, really gorgeous bead work. It's, I've never been a beater. I don't know if you could tell. But really, really nice shop. And also want to remind everybody, Valley of the Lights going on until December 30th, every night, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. So, make it out there, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Zack. Okay, we go on to comments and communications. Council got any comments? Anyone?
What you want to do?
Just give us one.
What? Family violence.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed a family violence. Sorry about that, Chief. Jump ahead of you.
Mayor, members of council, these are the opportunities that I'd like to come before you because tonight we have some awards to give out. I'm pretty sure everybody's familiar with the great work that our Family Violence Unit does on a day-to-day basis, serving this community. But tonight, the awards are for other people, officers in the patrol division who step up and do extra work to help and assist the Family Violence Unit accomplishing their goals. So, these are awards for patrol officers. And to give those awards tonight, I'm going to introduce Lieutenant John Woods, who's the patrol, or the Investigations Division commander, and he's going to give those awards. Thank you.
Mayor and council, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. We're recognizing, like the chief said, some of the people from our patrol section that greatly assist our domestic violence unit, which if you don't know, is probably the best unit in northern Arizona, if not one of the best units in the state. Some of them are here tonight. I'd like to acknowledge Rachel, James Tobin. They do a great job for me every day. And I'd like to call Mike Williams up. And I'm sorry, I just got reading glasses, but I forgot them tonight. So, I'm going to try. I'm good. Those are curls. Sergeant Mike Williams began his law enforcement career with the Prescott Valley Police Department in January of 2000. From the outset of his career, Sergeant Mike Williams demonstrated a special interest for investigating domestic violence cases and displaying a commitment for improving services for domestic violence crime victims. In 2008, Sergeant Mike Williams further demonstrated his passion for this issue by assisting in researching, writing, and implementing the Prescott Valley Stop Grant, which is our domestic violence grant, which led to the formation of the Prescott Valley Family Violence Unit in 2009. Sergeant Mike Williams has continued to oversee and continue to grow and develop the efforts of the Family Violence Unit. The success of the Family Violence Unit is a direct result of Sergeant Mike Williams' above and beyond commitment in this area. Sergeant Mike Williams is well deserving of this certificate and is a great asset to the entire unit and our community. Congratulations, Mike.
Sergeant Williams, I think there's... There's some special people that you should introduce to.
All these guys.
Use the microphone, if you will. Otherwise, we won't go over the TV.
I've been accused of having a loud, booming voice that I don't need a, that's what my family accuses me of in the house. My lovely wife, Valeria, is here. My son, Curtis. My daughters, Carly and Maggie, and my loving, caring, wonderful, beyond words that a kid can have, parents, Carla and Bill. My mother and father are all here as well. I just wanted to, I'll just take the opportunity, hopefully I've got a couple of minutes set aside. You know, I appreciate the recognition, I really do, on this award. It was truly seven, eight years ago in that range that I had a vision to, I saw our calls for service that our department, our small agency, was dealing with. We were burdened with domestic violence calls. Unfortunately, it's something that we have to deal with. It's one of those, it's one of those realities, unfortunately. But we are inundated with domestic violence calls. I saw that we could do better in this area, and I had a vision of a specialized unit. And I got to tell you, it's, it is incredible to me that the unit has grown to where it is today, that we are dealing with domestic violence. We are, we are going to have to deal with domestic violence for the rest of our careers. We're going to pass it on to the others. Unfortunately, that's, it is what it is. But I am proud to say that we have an outstanding, award-winning, from the State Attorney General's Office, specialized unit in place, the only one outside the greater Phoenix area in the state of Arizona to deal with this. And I'd like to say, over the years, over the past seven years, I have been proud, honored to work with the men and women in our Family Violence Unit. Over the years, there's been several, obviously, that are not here today. But the real winners, honestly, the real winners are the victims of these domestic violence incidences that we have helped and served better. It's truly for the victims. It's not about me. It's not about the detectives. It's not about the community service officers. We all do great work, but it's about the victims that we serve. And that's truly what was behind this from the onset. Rachel Montague has done a wonderful job in the few months that you've been in the unit. I really appreciate your work. Detective James Tobin back there, I can't even describe in words the invaluable service that you have lent to the unit. And you've elevated us, truly, James, you've elevated us to a, to a new level. And when you eventually leave the unit, it's, you've set that bar real high. So, I really appreciate your work, and it's for the victims. And it's truly, what we share in common, and it's unusual, what we share in common together is the passion in the heart for this work. And that's what it takes. You've got to have the passion and the heart for it, and this unit has it. So, it's, it's for them and the victims. And I want to say a special thank you to the council member, the members as a whole, certainly for all your support over the years, because we have had to, we have had to renew our Family Violence Unit grant. It's on a three-year cycle. We have had to renew it every three years, and your support has been invaluable. And I really appreciate each and all of your support. But I have to give a special shout-out to Laura Lee Nye. You have been behind the scenes, pushing, pushing for our lights, pushing for our candlelight vigil, and being that constant light yourself behind the scenes that has lent that special support to us. So, I really appreciate it, Laura Lee. So, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Mayor and council, thank you again. We have one more. We were going to do another award tonight, but one of our officers is very ill and cannot be here. So, Scott Rudolph, can you come up here, please? This will be for the Family Violence Unit Officer of the Quarter for the third quarter for July through September of 2015. Officer Scott Rudolph has been a member of the Prescott Valley Police Department for three years. Officer Rudolph has distinguished himself as a hard-working and productive member of the Prescott Valley Police Department. He was a founding member of the Family Violence Adjunct Team since January of 2015. In addition to his patrol duties, Officer Rudolph has taken on additional responsibilities as the Family Violence Unit Adjunct Team member and has assisted in completing multiple felony and misdemeanor investigations, has served numerous orders of protections and injunctions against harassment, assisted with domestic violence training for new officers at NARDA, and participated in Take Back the Night, the Candlelight Vigil. Officer Rudolph has distinguished himself as a hard-working and productive member of Prescott Valley, and he was recently promoted to the rank of detective, where he now works directly under me for his fortune. Officer Rudolph is a great member of our team and is well worth of this award. Thank you.
Scott, do you have any comments and introductions?
Well, no, I, this kind of puts me on the spot. I did not realize that I was going to have to actually talk into the mic here, but, no, my wife and my two kids, Brandis, Traiton, and Brielle, they're not here right now. My sister-in-law just had her third child, so they had to run down to Phoenix, so I'm here by myself. But I will make it very quick. I don't have nearly as much to say as Sergeant Williams did, wherever you went there. But I just will say that really, I'm not doing anything special. I'm just part of the adjunct team. Really, I'm just doing what's asked of me, and that's a tribute to Detective Tobin. He kind of helped set that up as well as Sergeant Williams. And they kind of lay out the groundwork and just say, hey, these are things that we need help with, and I'm just trying to assist to do those things. So, really don't have anything else to add. I do appreciate the award, I guess, but I feel like it's kind of undeserving, so. But thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for letting us do this. I do want to just briefly explain, the adjunct team, what it is, is we've asked other officers in the department who are interested in learning the skills and trying to deal with and investigate domestic violence to step forward. So, they've done that on their own, and all the work that they do with the Family Violence Unit is in addition to all of their regular patrol assigned duties. And so, it's really interesting, and I'm grateful to see you guys like that step forward. And you just witnessed the modesty that's very common throughout our department. People don't look at it as stepping up and doing something above and beyond. They look at it as their normal job, and we're all grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chiefs. Thank you, police.
Mayor.
Laura.
I would just like to agree with our officers that sadly, we don't prevent domestic violence. But what a difference this team is making in this community. I have a chance, unfortunately, through another board I serve on, to interact with some of the people you serve. I hear your names over and over and over, that you're their hope in their life, and I just wanted to share that with you and on all behalf of all those who you've come in contact with. Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you, Laura. Marty?
Yeah, I just want to repeat something that the chief said, that our officers, their dedication, and they're constantly stepping up to do, to go above and beyond what their minimum requirement is. And I mean, every officer in our, in our community, you hear it over and over and over again about, you know, how far they go and what they're willing to do in order to protect our community and keep it safe and what it is. So, it's, it's nice that we honor these officers, and it's even nicer to see that they give credit to others and they don't wash the spotlight upon themselves. So, I'm very happy that we have the police force that we do, and we have the leadership within our police force that we do. So, thank you very much and congratulations on the awards.
Thank you, Marty. Rick?
I just want to thank you for all the work that you do and that you continue to do. It's an honor to sit up here and be able to look down on a group, or look at a group of officers as dedicated and as willing as you are. And it makes me humbled to be here. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mary?
Well, I'm sure all of you know how much I support all of you and how important you are to, to our community and to me personally. You know, I, I always think of every day, your families go ahead and send you off to your jobs. And our job as a council and as a town is to do the best we can to support you, to make sure you get back home to those families. And that's what we will always do. We love and appreciate you. God bless you always. We really, really will always be here for you.
Thank you, Mary. Mike?
Yeah, I wanted to say, Lynn, my thank you as well. I think when I review the police log every day, I think it's something in our community that we need to address, and we're doing that through the Family Violence Unit. And I think we have one of the best, I feel, in Arizona. I think we see the unit being recognized at least once a quarter. And I think they're the program or the unit that really is showing, I think, the rest of the communities around central Arizona and Arizona, state of Arizona, how this is done. And I would hate to think if we didn't have this resource where we'd be today. So, we are very thankful for, for the unit and the work you do.
Stephen?
I'm just going to echo what everybody else has said. Thank you, guys, for what you do. You guys are awesome. And I know you, every time you come up here, you, you thank the council for what we do. Really, we don't do anything. We come here once a week and vote on stuff. You guys are out there doing the stuff every day. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
When the call comes in, action is the word. You guys are performing just great. Thank you. We appreciate it. We're grateful. Okay, if there's no more comments, we'll move on then to number seven, Consent Agenda. All matters listed, listed under Consent Agenda, do you shut it off? All matters under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the agenda and will be discussed separately. This includes the approval of the December 3, 2015 council meeting minutes, approval of the November 5, 2015 Board and Selection Committee minutes, approving accounts payable, our monthly financial report, council investment report, department reports, and approving the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition proposal to apply to, for the Wells Fargo National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant, up to $30,000, and a USDA service biomass development grant for up to $25,000, or $250,000, rather, and accepting a comprehensive annual financial report for the Town of Prescott Valley for fiscal year 2014 and 15. And I is approving the transfer of funds in the amount of $2,638 from the police department's fiscal year 1516 operation budget to the capital budget. Thank you all, folks, for all coming. Anyone want to pull an item, or do you want to approve the Consent Agenda as it is?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve all items on the Consent Agenda by electronic vote.
Oh, gave the motion a second. Mine says connecting, but it's not, I'm past that.
Mayor, that came across with six to zero. You're not even showing up there. I'll come over and assist you in just a minute. How did you wish to vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now we move on to old business for action. Consideration of approving a second reading of and passage of ordinance number 812, approving ZMC 15-003 for the Public Works Yard. This is one we've studied. Any comments, Larry? Or Carmen is here.
No, you had the presentation at our last work study. This is just to go ahead and bring the Public Works Yard to the public lands zoning. And Carmen is more than eager to answer any questions if you have any.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Any questions, anyone? I think you explained it to us pretty good last week, Kyle.
Yes, it is a twofold kind of a, of a process or need. Number one is the housekeeping need, because all of our public facilities are zoned PL, and then also in anticipation of a potential cell tower located on the Public Works Yard. And yes, Ivan and Larry were kind enough to help describe the, the need for this rezoning action. So, if anyone does have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? If not, then I would ask Town Clerk to read ordinance number 812 by title only for the second reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 812. An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending town zoning map by changing the zoning classification of approximately four and eight tenths acres located east of Robert Road, north of Long Mesa Drive, and south of Laredo Drive from PM, Performance Manufacturing Zoning, to PL, Public Land Zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. With that, shall the ordinance pass? Can you sit to vote, Diane? And that passes, I hope?
Passes unanimously, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, move on to number nine. New business for review, comment, and/or possible action. Consideration of asking the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1944, declaring the tax code of Prescott, Town of Prescott Valley, 2015 edition, to be a public record under Arizona Revise Statute Number 9-802. Katie?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council. Tonight, bringing before you updates to the town tax code. Over the years, the league has assisted the town with updating various changes that the Municipal Tax Code Commission makes to the tax code that all cities and towns use. Over the last few years, a shift in responsibilities went to the Department of Revenue to keep the official version of the code. And as such, some of the changes during the last few years were, were lost in that translation where we didn't update them. So, these are for updates for 2012, 13, and 14. And basically, at this point in time, I would like to thank Ivan, the town attorney, went through and extensively reviewed all the changes and made sure that even the most minor of things, grammatical errors and capitalization and things like that, as well as the larger changes, were made accurately. And he worked with the league intensively to make sure we have the most up-to-date code possible. And now they're even talking about using that as a model for other towns and cities who are going to be using those updates. And this also takes into account the sales tax increase, which was already passed in the previous ordinance, 811. It just reflects that in our official version of the code. And with that, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, anyone? Sounds like, the harder it gets, right?
Yes, sir.
That's our legislators. Okay, any questions? Otherwise, we could go to the first motion. Okay.
I should authorize the mayor in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 1944, declaring the tax code of the Town of Prescott Valley, 2015 edition, to be a public record under ARS 9-802 by a... record under ARS 9-802 by electronic vote.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with the motion in a second, would you set the vote, Diane? And that passes. Thank you. Okay, now we go to number B. Consideration of reading ordinance number 813 by title only on two separate occasions and then place the same on final passage adopting the tax code of Prescott, Prescott Valley, 2015 edition. Anything else to add to that? Katie?
No, sir, I don't have anything else to add unless you have any questions.
Any questions, anyone on that? Okay, we need a motion on that one if you're ready.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay, we're ready.
Motion to read ordinance number 813 by title only on two separate occasions and then placing the same on final passage adopting the tax code of the Town of Prescott Valley, 2015 edition by electronic vote.
I'll second.
We have the motion in a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? And that passes. Thank you. Okay, now that passed, I asked Diane or town clerk to read ordinance number 813 by title only for the first reading.
Ordinance number 813.
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, repealing and reenacting the tax code of the Town of Prescott Valley in Chapter 8A, Transaction Privilege Tax, Article 8A-01, Adoption of Model Tax Code, Section 8A-01-010, Adoption of Model Tax Code, adopting by reference a document entitled Tax Code of the Town of Prescott Valley, 2015 edition, declared by Resolution number 1944 to be a public record, which conforms to the amendments to the Model Tax Code approved by the Municipal Tax Code Commission in 2012, 2013, and 2014, and resolves certain discrepancies between the Model Tax Code and the tax code of the Town of Prescott Valley, providing penalties for violations, providing that any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance or reenacted town tax code held invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof, providing that the provisions of this ordinance conform to the Model City Tax Code, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. That was a long sentence, wasn't it? Okay, we'll move on to number C. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution number 1934 declaring the property maintenance agreements to be a public record under ARS 9-802.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Are we ready already? No more comments? Okay, we're ready.
Motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution 1934 declaring the property maintenance amendments to be public record under ARS 9-802.
Mayor, I'll make a second.
Set the motion in a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? Thank you, Diane. We'll go on to E. Consideration of reading ordinance number 810 by title only for two separate occasions and place the same on final passage adopting the property maintenance agreement. Anything else to add to that? Where's Norm? He's not here. I think it's more of a housekeeping thing, is that right?
That is correct, Mayor.
Anybody care to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to read ordinance number 810 by title only on two separate occasions and then place the same on final passage adopting property maintenance agreements by electronic vote.
I'll second.
The motion in a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? And that passes. With that, I would ask title town clerk to read ordinance number 810 by title only for the first reading.
Ordinance number 810. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference that certain document property maintenance amendments declared by Resolution number 1934 to be a public record, revising Article 9-04 Property Maintenance in Chapter 9, Health and Sanitation of the Town Code, by amending Sections 9-04-010 definitions, repealing and reenacting Sections 9-04-020, owner, lessee, or occupant to maintain property, and 9-04-030, prohibition against placing rubbish on other property, enacting a new Section 9-04-035, criminal and civil liability, and renaming and otherwise amending Sections 9-04-040, notice to comply, 9-04-070, abatement by town, and 9-04-80, assessment for abatement, to, among other things, specify that owners, lessees, or occupants of real property shall remove rubbish, including other accumulations of filth, related debris, and dilapidated buildings that constitute a hazard to public health and safety from a pertinent, adjacent, or contiguous sideways, alleys, and portions of street which are not hard-surfaced for vehicular traffic. Maintain said areas in a clean and safe condition, and otherwise avoid keeping or maintaining any nuisance thereon, including keeping the portion of any sidewalk immediately adjacent to the property clean and free of snow and ice. Conforming with amendments to Arizona Revised Statutes limiting the ability of municipalities to require payment of assessments for town abatement of violations of the article from owners of residential property of four or fewer units serving as a rental with a tenant at the time of removal. Setting forth in full the penalty clauses, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. That was another mouthful, wasn't it? Good job. Okay, we move on to number E. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution number 1942 approving the proposed amendment to development agreement to Presley Investment for the new Volkswagen dealership. And Greg, you're up, and this is your last meeting and your last up...
Possibly.
Maybe one more meeting, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you noticed the very, very strong look of melancholy on his face as he was sitting there waiting for this item, because he is really gonna miss these meetings.
I already got on the retirees diet. What is the breakfast of bran flakes and prune juice and all that?
All I know is I was tired listening to that. Do you need some water?
Any other comments?
No.
Sorry, you can't avoid it. I was looking at you back there, and I commented to Marty. I bet this is the last time that he comes before us. So I was smiling because we talked briefly about what your plans are, and it makes me very happy to know you have plans.
Thank you.
And that you're going to enjoy your family. So I just want to say thank you for your service and just enjoy it.
You had a comment?
Thanks.
I'll get back to it. Oh, get back. Marty, did he have a comment?
About Greg or about the... Well, we've already thrown the party. Greg and I had a private conversation, so he knows how I feel. But just so the public knows, I just welcomed him to the retirement community, and the first thing I asked him was, is he leaving Prescott Valley? And when he said no, I cheered up. So we know he'll still be around, so there's always a phone call that we can make and ask him.
Mary has a question.
Congratulations on your retirement and enjoy it. I hope you enjoy yours as much as I'm enjoying mine.
Mary has a question for you.
Why, it's not a question, it's just a comment in the sense that, you know, I really appreciate all your hard work, and I look forward to the day when I can be in your shoes, because retirement looks really good to me.
Does look good, and yes.
And I'm more than willing to give it a try. So God bless you, and thank you again. You've done a fabulous job in your, in your work efforts here in this town, and it shows. Thank you.
Nobody knows. Thank you for commenting.
Well, I do. I just want to congratulate you on your retirement. And like anything, it's a sad time when we see valuable employees that leave us, and you've put your mark on this community, and we'll always look at that as a great investment in our future. So good luck, and hopefully you do stay here and...
Thank you.
Help us.
Just heard that. Write that down in the minutes.
They weren't all black marks either.
But you could be wise about it and say that you quit work about five years ago. It's time to retire.
Very good, Mayor.
That wasn't very good, was it?
Why is Parker here?
Why is Parker here?
I'm really looking forward to spending some quality time with Greg, but I wanted to take a moment and also point out what he's done for this community. We stole him from the city of Prescott, and I can't think maybe Katie was another really good egg that we got from the city of Prescott, but this was a really good egg from the city of Prescott. And that was a strategic move, because he knew everybody in the Quad City areas. He had those connections, and he was willing to come to work for the finest organization in the Quad Cities, and that's the Town of Prescott Valley. So I think he leapt at the opportunity, but I'm really, really glad that Larry saw the wisdom of hiring a seasoned professional like Mr. Fister, and he's going to be missed. And I've enjoyed the many years that I've worked with him, the many years that I've had to put up with him and tolerate him, but, yeah, before he worked here. But good luck and enjoy your time off. Now, if you'd like to come back, when we annex other areas around the town, we'd be looking for a code enforcement officer, and that may be something that he could be up to as well.
Greg, you've done a great job, and everybody appreciates you.
Thank you. Yeah, I remember I was at a conference down in Phoenix, and I was working for the city of Prescott, and Richard sidles up to me and sits down, and I'm trying to listen to the guy who's talking, and Richard just starts yakking in my ear, as he wants to do every occasionally, and he said, you know, why don't you think about coming to the Town of Prescott Valley? And at that time, I hadn't really thought about that. And I said, oh, okay, you know, maybe. And he says, well, come on out to lunch with Larry and I. And we went to lunch at Carino's, Johnny Carino's, when Johnny Carino's was here. And I was wooed, I guess, and in a moment of tremendous weakness, I said, I said, oh, yeah, let's try this. Let's see how this will go. Let's see how this will go. If Larry paid for lunch, his was the extreme weakness. I think he did pay. I know I didn't pay for lunch. But I appreciate the kind words.
Oh, we sure have appreciated you, Greg.
It's been fine. I mean, and I've told Larry this many times, that working here is probably the most enjoyable work experience I've had in 40 years, and I've been 28 years in the public sector and set me, I don't know, another 20 years or 10 years, whatever it was, in the private sector, and it's really a joy to come to work. And I mean that. I mean, it's, I can tell you horror stories in some of the places I've worked where, you know, migraines and ulcers are part of the deal, but certainly not the case here. So I appreciate the kind words, and hopefully I left Prescott Valley better than when I came, so we'll see.
You've helped us a lot, Greg.
Please. Now, Stephen, I don't see this on the agenda, you know. Anyway.
It'd be interesting.
Yeah, I know. The item before you is pretty straightforward. Basically, the town and town council approved a development agreement with Presley Investments, AKA Earnhardt VW, in January. They figured they'd be under construction or maybe even open by now. So therefore, the term of the agreement ends in June 30, 2016. The agreement, if you remember, the agreement is we would pay their building permit fees and development impact fees up to a maximum of $50,000. We cannot do that if the term of the agreement has expired, if there's no agreement, basically. So this is, before you is a six-month extension of the agreement. It goes to December 31, 2016. They believe that's time enough for them to get open. And as a matter of fact, their plans are already in-house and being reviewed by the Community Development Department and Engineering, et cetera. So hopefully, if everything gets smoothed out from the VW, VW point of view, you know, that's the whole holdup. It was not of their making. It was, as you know, that's in the news, seems like every day with the VW diesels. That kind of pushed them back a little bit. So they believe that they would be open by the end of the year. Once they're open, the building permit fees and development fees will be reimbursed to them when the certificate of occupancy is issued, so that hopefully, well, they believe it'll be before December of next year. So that's what we have.
Any questions?
I don't really have a question. I'm just so grateful that they didn't, I don't even know what term to use, but with the international disgrace that they've had to deal with, that they want to go forward and still have a presence here, shows a lot of strength, and I appreciate, I appreciate very much that they're going to do that.
Certainly agree with that.
Any other questions or comments? Or motions? Commotions? Emotions?
I'll make a motion.
Marty?
Motion to authorize the, whoops, we've got to wait for a second. Okay, never mind. Motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution number 1942 approving the proposed amendment to develop, to the development agreement with Presley Investments for a new Volkswagen dealership by electronic vote.
Okay, we have the motion in a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? That passes. Greg, thank you again. That was a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we go on to F. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution number 1943 approving the FDP 15-018 Crossroads Parcels, CPAD 9 for Dutch Brothers Coffee and sign any agreement under Proposition 207. Carmen?
Great, thank you, Mayor. This evening for your consideration, I have a final development plan on request from Rob Schramm of Kitchell Development for a Dutch Brothers Coffee. It's a drive-through coffee shop that will be located, as you see on the board, in the Crossroads Development south of Highway 69. This final development plan is in compliance with all Town Code. It's been reviewed by staff, and staff recommends that final development plan for Dutch Brothers will add a diverse mix of strong commercial tenants to crossroads and will provide the residents and visitors with additional drive-through beverage options. It's well-located for this use, and that's based on existing zoning and land use designations. Also, Bill Cantieri of Dutch Brothers is here, and Dutch Brothers has quite a unique business model, and I know he would really enjoy coming up and telling you a little bit about it.
Would?
Yeah. This is Bill from Dutch Brothers.
Come on up. It's good to see you and appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you very much, Mayor Scoob, council members. Merry Christmas. My name's Bill Cantieri. I work with Dutch Bros Coffee. Dutch Bros is a, actually was started in 1992 by a couple of dairy farmers who, I mean, they're Boersma Brothers, they're Dutch is where the name came from, and they were kind of struggling, trying to figure out something to do in the wintertime, and started one coffee cart in 1992 and have now expanded to 260 units in the Western U.S. What's unique about the concept is, you know, is the culture. I mean, they are, I mean, it is, the drinks that go out the window are less than 50% of what you're buying at Dutch Bros. I mean, it, you know... I mean, it's about a customer experience that, you know, that they want to make friends with everyone in the drive-through lane. They want to know, you know, they want to know what your, you know, what your regular order is, you know, and have it ready for you when you get through the window, you know? Besides, just, you know, great customer service. I mean, they really just, I mean, it's a people business. I mean, the president, Travis Boersma, is, well, he was on Undercover Boss two years ago, and it was actually one of the only positive undercover bosses that, you know, that you'll see. And he just, he just could not, he had to break character, you know, when he was just amazed by, you know, amazed by people that was, you know, helping to serve him well. And the franchisee for this store, a woman named Jasmine, was actually on that show as well. I mean, it was her dream to open up a Dutch Bros. You cannot, you cannot buy a franchise. Their new franchise model is, is you work for the store, you become a regional manager or a trainer, and they identify these, what they call rock stars. And those people basically lobby to have their own store. And so they come up with a franchise fee, and Dutch Bros is building the building for them and setting them up in business, because they want to keep the culture of, you know, of young and fun, you know, in the stores. And the building is primarily, there is no dining room in the building. I mean, everything is about making coffee and, you know, getting drinks out the window as quickly as possible. There's an outdoor patio that we, you know, that we have, and, you know, and there, and, you know, typical, you know, typical time for order is under a minute. So, you know, unlike other coffee shops where you can, you know, run out of gas waiting in the drive-through lane, you know, it's always, always fast and, you know, and always fun. Music is a big part of what's happening, and often even, I mean, I'm amazed when I go to the grand openings, you know, even the, you know, vice president of training of the company is, I mean, is, you know, 5:30 in the morning, is literally dancing, you know, while he's pulling shots, you know? And, I mean, and that just, you know, continues, you know, all the way down through the company. And anyways, but this is a new franchise area for Dutch Bros, and I'm personally excited that it's in Prescott Valley, and we're glad to be here.
Community is going to enjoy this one. Any other question, Laura?
I don't have any questions, but I want to share something with you. I never acquired the coffee habit, so I wasn't aware of this company. So I did my homework, and I just want to tell you, you picked the right community for your culture. And we're lucky to have you, and you're lucky to have us. And I'm surprised at how many people knew about your brand. When I did my research, I did the formal stuff online, like I always do. Then I started asking individuals. Well, let me tell you, they can hardly wait. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good. Mary?
Well, I'm excited, because you're going to put your business right close to where I work every day. And that's exciting, because I love coffee. And so we've all been talking about it over there, and we're anxious for you to get over there and get going and start getting that coffee ready, because we have no coffee up in that area. So it's good stuff.
Yes, it is. So, yeah, we're just so excited about it. I mean, this is an area I visit all the time, and, you know, looking forward to.
Marty, you got a comment?
No. No, I'm good.
Anyone else? Any questions? Bill, we really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Good job, Carm. The, emotions, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution 1943 approving FDP 15-018 Crossroads Parcel C-PAD 9 for Dutch Brothers Coffee Business, and to sign any agreement under Proposition 207.
I'll second the motion.
We got the second motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? It was there and it disappeared on me.
How do you wish to vote, Mayor?
Okay, everybody, they pass? Bill, go for it. Carm, thank you for a good job. Well done. Okay, we move on to number 10. Comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Anyone wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone care to make any comments? Kirk? No comments tonight? Okay, if there's no comments, we have one more item that I know everyone hates, number 11, that's to adjourn. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn by electronic vote.
We have the motion, second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? And that one, I believe, passes. Can you believe it's unanimous?
I can't.
You better recite that, though.
I think you want to do a recount. Mary says recount. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. It was good to see you all.